I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee on Tuesday, November 27th at the Abington Middle High School Library at 7:00 PM. First, our business, like to have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up, hearing your visitor, is anybody like to speak that's here? Okay, move on to the approval of minutes. The first set of minutes is from our regular meeting on October 23rd, and we also have executive session minutes from October 23rd as well, so we get a chance to look those over. I'll be looking for a motion on them.
Can I just say an amendment to the October 23rd? I misquoted the language, maybe that the minutes from today could reflect this, that the June meeting where we set some language to lift the professional performance of leaders at the building, it should say "and central office," under which you have direct control, that's the language in all of our past.
Okay.
On page...
Five, I think, right?
Five. I left that, it was my fault that I misquoted the language, and I just wanted it to reflect accurately what, how it's worded.
Okay.
So, I think what you're saying is those minutes will say that, but tonight you're updating, tonight's minutes are going to say, you want to make sure...
We approve those with that correction.
Right, we approve the minutes as amended.
No, we're not amending those minutes.
Oh, because that's what was actually said.
That was, that's what was actually said.
Gotcha.
But I think, which if I have, but let me, maybe I don't have it right.
And I'm not sure quite how it works, I just know that when I was reading the minutes, I wanted tonight's record to reflect that I misquoted the original language.
Yes, yes, okay, perfect.
That's what I think you're doing.
That's happened to me with the Abington Cam vote, too.
Okay.
All right, so, thank you, Jackie.
Thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes.
I'll second it.
Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And looking for the same for the executive session.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor of those?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent, moving on.
Do you have them? My friend has them.
The pins. So, before we get started, I wanted to mention that we received a set of five, is it five, Teresa? Five pins for recognition of the National Blue Ribbon Program from the government, excuse me, I'd just like to pass them out to the entire school committee.
It's fun, thank you.
No, our high school administration wanted to make sure that you guys, you guys got them, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
And they're really cool.
Really cool.
Thank you.
So, now I butcher that. Moving on, the principal report, principal report, Dr. Sullivan is here. The pin is...
I've just had a request approval of two international trips.
Okay.
Field trip to Italy and Greece for February 2020, and the international trip through in April 2020. We've been asked to come earlier and earlier, just to give students a chance to fundraise and make decisions about travel as earlier, you know, as we can. I know that you might not approve it tonight, but if you would consider it and you could ask answer questions tonight, Karen Daisy with me, sort of the guru of global travel for Abbott and I, since you had specific questions, she could probably answer them better than I could.
Okay.
I was just wondering if you could speak to the, like, selection process of the trips and how it's done.
We had a subcommittee meeting of the school committee and administration last year.
Last year, something like that.
So, are we talking about the selection process of individuals or selection process of which trips were going on?
Actually, sorry, actually, I meant to say, like, how the students are selected to be able to go on the trip, sorry.
Sorry.
That's, that's what we had a subcommittee meeting on, and went through, you know, criteria, so we do have a process that we agreed upon. Basically, it is approval by administration and faculty, it's a questionnaire that they get, similar to National Honor Society, where there's a rubric of one, twos, threes, looking for character and leadership, and so they are, you know, asked of the faculty, coaches, advisors, students are also asked to complete usually two questions, you know, why do you want to travel, why do you think you'd be a good global traveler, and what does it mean to you? They typically ask for about a two-page essay, looking for seriousness of purpose, what it means to them. I think we've learned a lot by doing trips like this, and screened out sort of the sarcastic comment, because I'm tall, like we seen in the crowd, and really want to, the people really want to go for the right reasons. So, the students have that, the selection process, and they're screened out by the, by the committee that is traveling.
Have we ever gone to Italy and Greece before?
We have, several. No, I didn't say.
That's a great question.
Yeah, that's the 10-day trip.
That was my question. That was my, that was my question.
So, if this gets approved tonight, Terry, will the kids start, when would you anticipate that you'd be asking, you know, bringing it to the children and having parent meetings and such?
So, they could, so as soon as possible, they could start fundraising, because a lot of them need to schedule also their, their payments, the payment plan, as soon as possible.
And the, they offer a $200 discount for early signup, and I spoke with the man today, and he basically said as long as, like, if I'm a chaperone on the Peru trip, as long as I sign up, sometime before Christmas vacation, it locks in that rate, and then it's always pending school committee approval and all that stuff, so we would refund it, and the kids, they want signed by the end of January.
The end of January.
The end of January. So, I think that we would probably hold parent meetings and give them the applications prior to the winter break or Christmas vacation, and then we would ask the faculty, it's a lot to ask practices to rate them and do all that stuff prior to, and it's a crazy time.
I know, you have two January meetings, too, so, I think.
Yeah, we do.
You could still get it done.
Is this earlier than we typically do this, or is this the regular time schedule? It's very early, really, yeah, that's why.
It was earlier because we had, we've always done it, like, in May, and then we literally have three weeks to turn it around, and it's like, sorry, I know you're grading finals and you're doing this and doing that, but can you please give us an answer right now? You have one day to fill out this form, and I, like Dr. Sullivan said, it's also better, each payment will be less per month if they can get started earlier.
And I think the school committee asked last year if they could present it earlier as well.
Yeah, because I feel like I was in the spring when I was at meeting.
I think, again, I think, we've learned a lot, and I think we've worked out, you know, tweaked some of the procedural things, I think this is trip 10 or 11.
Right, the opportunity is awesome. I've heard great things about the Greece trip, and adding Italy to it, I think, is amazing, so.
I'll have the same question, have you guys gone to Peru before, or somewhere in South America?
Yeah, I've been to South America.
Okay, I remember that, yeah, I remember that, okay.
Is Peru a service trip, or is it?
No.
No, just cultural.
That's going to be amazing.
It is, they're all, I mean, they're all...
Oh, absolutely.
So, then I can make a motion to approve them?
Yeah, I'm looking for any motion, if we're going to do this, we're going to do it one trip at a time, so any motion related to the international field trip to Italy and Greece in February of 2020?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, following that up, any motions related to the field trip to Peru in April of 2020?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just ask one other quick question, it doesn't matter, I'm just curious, because I noticed it, 27 max for Peru, but to be determined for the Italy and Greece trip, are just more people able to go?
I don't know why it's like that, it's usually 27.
I just didn't know if it was...
Different people filling out the forms.
Just curious.
I think they probably wrote "to be determined" because they may not, you know, we put 27 max for Japan trip, but we have, like, 12, so it just depends on who, who's going.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is report of subcommittees, policy review and update subcommittee, Jackie and Wendy are both on that, I'm going to let, the first one is consideration of proposed revisions to the graduation ceremony policy, I'm going to let you two take it, describe the changes.
Okay, so, it was just added, the fourth was added, it says, "A former member of the school committee with a son or daughter in the graduating class will be allowed to hand their son or daughter his or her diploma." I mean, it's a nice added touch, so I think it was Jeanette that maybe have brought this? No? You? Who did it? I think it's amazing.
It was a question I was asked.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Well, I think it's great, I mean, so...
Brought it to the other members for consideration.
Oh, so, we approved it, I mean, it was simple?
Yeah, I'm almost surprised that we didn't have something like this already, just seems like a nice token of appreciation for volunteering some time.
Agreed, agreed.
So, whoever brought this up, thank you.
Yeah.
Benefits everybody.
All four of my kids will be happy now.
So, I'll be looking for a motion to approve...
Can I just add?
Yes, of course, Jeanette.
I think overall, this went into effect three, it must have been three years ago, that it, to have a policy per se, I really think it should be thought about, what is best for the students? Is it a stranger giving them the diploma, or is it someone, hey, that, you know, has known them since they were five-year-olds and may have taught them mighty, mighty soccer? But, you know, it has no bearing, you know, I just think that we should always try to think about what's best for the kids, and not just necessarily always, there was no policy until about three years ago, until a policy needs to be placed, they're children.
I agree. But here we are.
So, do you need a motion?
Yes, I'll look for a motion to approve the revision to the graduation policy as presented.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Following that up, we have the consideration of proposed revisions to the memorandum of understanding for the school resource officers between the Abington Public Schools and the Abington Police Department. Again, I'm going to leave that to you two to explain.
The blueprint, with the Attorney General's blueprint, right?
Correct.
So, for this memorandum, which is, I think, 12 pages, we looked at a blueprint that's given to us by the Attorney General on what the school districts and the police department should have sort of set up as a memorandum of understanding. So, Wendy and I and Peter kind of sat and went through the blueprint and then Abington's existing memorandum, which for the most part matched up pretty well, there were just a few places where we felt like we could improve upon some of the language that was in there, and feel free to jump in if you want to, weren't, you want to highlight anything that's...
No, I think it's, I think you're, I think it speaks for itself, and what you're doing is describing exactly what people are seeing, but the only thing in bold italics here are those things that are the law, those aren't changes, just so that people know, this from the previous document.
I, I'll just say, you know, there, there was a piece in here about feedback, which is something that I know I've spoken a lot about, and there's a piece about, you know, there being an ability for the community to share feedback anonymously if they want to about SROs, and good or bad, I guess you'd say, and that function, we just added a line about the functionality of the website, because the Abington Police Department's website, the language said they could use the website or visit in person to give their feedback, which is, is difficult at times, so we added lines just about annually checking in on the functionality of that site to make sure that people have appropriate means to submit feedback, we thought that was a good change.
Yeah, no, definitely. Is that, I guess, I guess my question was just going to be, you just hit on one of them, but like, what, what the change is riding out, I mean, I don't remember the original.
Well, we, we had one, this is basically the boilerplate from the AG's office, with the, with the value added that Jackie just described, and so, it's actually, our old one is expired, and it's, it's written very differently than this, even though it does cap, even though our old one captured 70% of this, so it was possible to give you the changes, because we went with the boilerplate from the AG's office.
Okay, gotcha.
In, in bold, the way we do in most policies.
Are the police involved at all before this point, before we...
So, prior to meeting with Wendy and Jackie, I met, or went back and forth in emails with the police department, with the chief of police about this, then we had a subcommittee meeting, and then their recommended changes were given to the police department, the police department's already on board with their recommended changes, and so you're considering something that I know that they, that they feel comfortable with.
Okay.
The only thing that's missing here is the, at the end, you'll see what's required also is a standard operating procedure.
Okay.
It's Roman numeral eight, on page 11 of 12, and that operating procedure, they own, because it's an operating procedure for police officer, under the control of the police department, even though they're a school resource officer, so that's coming soon, I actually just got a copy of it tonight, but it's not, it wasn't formatted in a way that I could print, or I would have brought it to tonight's meeting, so I'll email with everybody tomorrow.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but on page five, I think another added, value-added piece to this was when we looked at the blueprint, some of the language in the Attorney General's blueprint was missing from, from the way that we crafted the Abington Public Schools memorandum, so for example, in letter F, you know, if people receive feedback, or the people give feedback, that the chief shall seriously consider any such feedback, and she'll make a good faith effort to address any concerns raised, that was in the blueprint and not in ours, and, and even though, you know, everyone seems to be very happy with our SROs, it's just, I felt like that was, we felt that was language that's important to include, to kind of carry over, as we talk about ways that people can share their comments, concerns, and compliments, really.
Okay.
And people can actually access the AG's boilerplate if they wanted to, one of the things that happened was, we were required to fill in the annual review and what those goals we based on, and so what we did is we took the mission statement, goals and objectives of the program itself from the first page and made those the goals for the SROs.
And I think our document, our existing document, very much mirrored the blueprint, I think that we just sort of, with a fine-tooth comb, looked for any language that may have been missing that we thought maybe should be added, and there was nothing that we added in, I think, that wasn't coming from the blueprint.
Yeah, yeah, okay, perfect.
If you want to wait to consider it till you see the operating procedure next month, that's, that's fine, if you want to consider it tonight, that's also fine, to the committee.
What do you think?
I mean, I think it's fine, I'm, I'm fine either way, I think it's fine to do it tonight, because it's been on the website and...
Okay, okay, so I'll be looking for a motion to approve the revisions to the memorandum of understanding for the school resource officers between the Abington Public Schools and the Abington Police Department as presented here.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up is Dr. Fedorowicz.
Hi, everyone, good evening, hope you had a great Thanksgiving, a little restful, unless you had a cook the entire time, or had a house full. Today, I'm going to present, I'm going to go over the November 6th professional development we did, talk about our curriculum review plan, and some more family engagement resources.
All of that was for me.
So, on November 6th, we didn't have school that day, it was also a voting day, and it was our professional development half-day, where we presented a menu of choices for the elementary and secondary educators, and we had one overlapping or commonly scheduled choice time between both elementary and secondary. The purpose of this day was to provide a variety of professional development selections that were tailored to the individual needs of both elementary and secondary teachers, based on what they felt they needed or wanted more training in, and this basically allowed educators to enhance their instructional and student engagement practices in their classrooms with their students. So, the training sessions that were provided were taught by both outside trainers and inside teacher experts that felt comfortable in teaching the technology curriculum. Secondary teachers came to the first session, and they chose specific instructional technology sessions that ranged from introductory to advanced canvas for the classroom use. The second session was an overlap session between secondary and elementary that consisted of opportunities like Office 365 accessibility inquiry training, so that both elementary and secondary teachers could take the same type of training, or they could choose sessions that were geared specifically towards secondary or specifically toward elementary. The third session was specifically geared toward elementary, so the secondary teachers left, and they were able to choose, the elementary were able to choose similar sessions to session two, but then additional sessions like clever or creative websites for session three. Our related service providers are specialists, such as team chairs, psychologists, speech, language pathologists, and nurses, they worked collaboratively in their specialized areas, because it was more specific for them. Anonymous surveys provided 10 minutes before the end of each separate session, overall showed positive feedback from mostly to very useful, and it was really appreciated to have this choice session for the three different sessions on this particular day geared toward secondary overlap, and then geared toward elementary. And I just want to say a special thanks to Rich Baikowski, our IT director, for the coordination of the technology component of our professional, professional development day, along with a lot of our teachers, our instructional technologists who provided the training as well in-house, so that we could have a plethora of menu of choices for that day. Any questions on the November 6th?
Can I just note, having half a dozen of our own teachers provide professional development to our own teachers was outstanding, I wasn't there, we were out, we were out of town on that, on that, the Blue Ribbon trip, but Rich and Sherry, Rich Baikowski and Sherry did a great job of coordinating and putting this all together with those teachers, I've heard just, people have commented on how well it went, so.
There was a lot of positive feedback on the facilitators from that day, so, actually there was a lot of engagement, which was great, and it's nice, teachers, teaching, teachers that have been using it in the classroom, so they were able to use a lot of the tips and tricks of navigating through those different components.
The teachers did a great job of it, yeah.
And it's just funny that we're talking about this, because we just spent the week in my district looking at research that talks about balanced professional development programming, and the balance is really in making sure that the people who come from out of district, that we pay to come into district to give our professional development, is balanced with teachers, expert, expert teachers from within the district who are sharing their own, so it's nice to see more teachers who are sort of, because it takes courage, really, to get up in front of your peers and be willing to teach something that you feel that you're doing well, or that you know a lot about, so I think it's great that more people are being willing to step up and do that.
Absolutely, and it was, it was actually a really nice follow-up to the August and September professional development, because we had a lot of training then, and I think a lot of teachers felt comfortable doing it on the November 6th, so it was nice. Okay, next, I want to discuss the curriculum review plan. So, right now, we're going into budget season, and that means we need to coordinate our curriculum and instructional needs across the district, so I just wanted to share a little bit behind the scenes of how we do this and how we make decisions about curriculum. So, our curriculum planning and professional development committee, which again consists of our teacher leaders, department heads, directors, elementary curriculum coordinators, principals, we collaboratively meet and look at our curriculum review plan, which is a document that we all put together to look at our curricular needs, both vertically and horizontally across the district. It's basically a living document that provides an ongoing review cycle to adjust for the most up-to-date information, most up-to-date curriculum that we need. We review this document at least twice a year in the spring and in the fall in preparation for budget, and to keep in line with our vision statement, and I'm not going to read it to you, it's, it's right there. The purpose of this document is to share with, with each other where we are with the curriculum and where we need to go. So, as you're aware, we've got pre-K through 12, so that's 13 grades, we've got multiple subjects within each, math, science, music, and so we need to really coordinate our larger purchases, and then also look at supplemental, we don't want to all rush in and say, we need new curriculum in math, ELA, science, all at one time across the grades, so there's a lot of planning that takes place behind the scenes with this, and so what we have is a four- to six-year plan, really, it's a six-year long-term strategic plan, and our data, we look at where we are with the curriculum, where the state comes out with different standards or updated standards, we attend professional development or conferences to get the latest on what the state is doing, or what other districts are doing, or what's coming down the pipeline, so that we can kind of coordinate what's going on. For example, this year, science, the 2016 science standards are going to be implemented in full and tested on the MCAS, so that's been, that was a priority. This year, right now, again, in this past June, the social studies standards came out, now we can't do pre-K through 12, you know, basically got what we have and then bring in all new, so that takes some coordination on our part. So, we use this document for budget conversations with Felicia and with Peter, so that we have our current and future curricular and instructional needs based on priority. So, what we came up with really is a six-year cycle, and we call it a four- to six-year cycle, because it consists of four to six contiguous phases to ensure a rolling review of each content area, so the phases, as you can see up there, include design, develop, implement, evaluate, monitor, or revise, and then plan. So, the first two phases, the design and develop, are basically used for new course development or for course restructure, which could create the six-year plan with the six phases. For our existing courses, where the curriculum might be fine, and there haven't been a lot of changes, we skip the design and development and look every four years, just to make sure we're up to date and consistent with each of those. If the curriculum is working with no major updates, then the design and development are bypassed, and we continue to monitor the curriculum on a, on a regular basis. Any questions regarding the curriculum review plan?
I have some questions.
Yep.
I just wanted to ask, and maybe you're not going to get too specific with us tonight, but as you think about this plan, can you talk a little specifics about, like, upcoming PD for ELA, like, I know we talked about grade five, that we purchased the Wonders materials, but we haven't necessarily given them the same professional development that K through four has gotten.
Right, so, next Monday, actually, we are sending all of grade five, and I want to say, probably 10 teachers' representation from Beaverbrook and from Woodsdale on the workshop model, that is going to specifically address, it's not the Wonders, but it's going to talk about the skills for the workshop model that they missed.
In Randolph?
In Randolph, yes, so we're able to get a bunch of slots, and the nice thing about this is that it's, it's going to be vertically and horizontally aligned, and this actually comes at an opportune time, because it's nice that we can send all of grade five to do this, so we're all on the same page, and the, and the lower grades, we have teachers going, so that as the kids are moving up, they're going to have the same skills coming into each classroom, it is a work in progress, it is kind of a paradigm shift, a mindset, but I think we're progressing very well in this.
I think that's awesome that they're getting, so Randolph is offering a professional development by Lucy Calkins, who is the creator of Reader's Workshop, I think, just a, so it's amazing, like, I actually would love to go, but I'm not able to go that day, but Lucy Calkins' workshop looks a little different than Wonders' implementation, so I think there'll probably need to be some follow-up training on how to take the materials that have been purchased for them, and take what they learned at that training, and be able to sort of blend or merge, because they're going to come out, I think, empowered and excited to try, but maybe have a different set of curriculum resources to do it with, if that makes sense, so they're going to need to do some transfer.
Absolutely, and what we've done, the previous PD days, we've started implementing, we've got some workshop experts in the districts, in the district with our reading specialists, so we've started introducing... so we've started introducing that and implementing it, getting some tools ready for that, and we've done some modeling in that area to get people ready for that. So we've, we kind of prepped the transition, then we're going to work on that workshop, and I agree, we do have for future PD in the district, although they're, they're half days, so two to three hours.
And I just think when possible to give teachers the time without a topic per se, like just after they go to this, there's a lot to digest, so if, if and when possible to give them even just time in their classroom to go through the Wonders materials that may not even be opened to their full extent yet because they didn't necessarily know how to use all the components, that sometimes we skip that step because we want to like get on to the next thing that's important to learn, and teachers really appreciate just having time when we can to, that's a form of professional development in itself. The only other question I have is in six through eight and nine through 12 for ELA, I noticed in some of the documents that we'll look at later, there's, there was a grant, a $10,000 grant for grades one and two for Heinemann Classroom Libraries. Is there ever any grants or, can you talk a little bit about how grades nine through 12 get updated classroom, not classroom libraries, but updated literature or novel sets that they may want to use?
It's, actually I've been working closely with Dr. Goncalves, the ELA Department Head, and we've been discussing, so as part of our Curriculum Review Plan, there have been conversations and looking at ways to update the novels for, actually it would be seven through 12. Grade six adopted the EMC Windows and Mirrors, and they already have some of the novels, and then in grade seven is more of a transition to less of that elementary model where you do have the full textbooks to more with the novels and the literature.
I can just say that I think in the last couple of years, there's been a great effort to work with the libraries, and moving to this new facility was really also about inventorying what was where and bringing three different schools' libraries together and sorting and meeting what was old and what's, so I know that there's a library budget as well that works with department heads and in particular with English Department, sort through what should be a classroom library or a level of classroom library versus what students could access here. I think we're tweaking that also, and as we get more comfortable with our facilities here and joining forces with what this library is, what things maybe should be moved out into a classroom.
And the only reason I ask is because I know the materials that come K to five, and then I can't imagine with the grant on top of it, like they're, they're really rich in resources right now, and, and current, up-to-date, high-quality, feel, look, and smell-good books. So I just, made me curious about the grades above that for equity, just to, to keep thinking about all of our students getting up-to-date curriculum.
It's interesting that you, that's the direction you're going with this because that's why we have the ongoing cycle with a calendar, so that we don't have something that languishes or a grade level that languishes, and that's why everybody's in the room when you have these conversations around curriculum planning, so it can be, so we can be a self-renewing organization about this and nothing drops off, and you can make decisions about, well, are we going to do social studies because the state's pushing that up? Are we going to do this grade in math because our MCAS data has shown the following? And all, all of those questions compared to the resources that are available so we can make strategic decisions come to bear through these conversations to address that.
Thank you, I'm assuming it was you who put together the Heinemann Grant?
Yes.
Yeah, because that's $10,000, buys a lot of books for primary students in two grades, so that's really, we're lucky to have that opportunity.
We're always looking for additional grants, so, and there are teachers that'll send grants my way and say, is this applicable or not, and some were eligible for and some were not, so. Any other questions? And then last, the U.S. Department of Education has a great resource page that I wanted to share with you. Last time I shared the Massachusetts Department of Education, but the federal government also has resources for families and parents and children. So this was actually developed in 1997 by the U.S. Government, and it's, it stands for Free Federal Resources for Educational Excellence, and it's basically where your digital teaching and your learning resources are merging. The features on this page or in this website highlight areas and ideas for every age group, learning abilities, featured resources on holidays, awareness months, anniversaries, and seasonal topics. If you have high school students and you want to know more about student loans, this is a great resource page that parents can go to to look up different types of student loans and go about filling out the FAFSA forms. And when you dig a little bit deeper, as an example, they have great things for each month, so if you're looking for ways to engage your kids or you want to know what's, what is being learned in school, in the curriculum, it's a great way to talk about it at dinner, at the bus stop, on a rainy day, and it doesn't have to be a long conversation, it's just, hey, how about November, you know, Veterans Day, did you guys do anything, what did you do, and whatnot. So I just wanted to share this resource page because it is very rich and it's very versatile for pre-K all the way up through 12.
Yeah, no, I think this is a great resource. Is there a way to make sure, it's probably on your Facebook page, right?
I usually put it on right after.
Right after, okay.
I don't announce it first, but yeah.
Yeah, to make sure that people can see, see, see what it has to offer, just even looking at the screen from the PowerPoint, you know what I mean?
That's it, shorter than the MCAS presentation. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
So I did want to mention before we move on to the next thing that normally James Robbins would be here for the direct, his presentation with Director of Student Services. He's not here tonight because him and his wife welcomed a baby boy last Saturday, whenever November 17th was. At 3:55 PM, Theodore Robbins was born, so he is taking care of the baby, taking care of mom, and he'll be back next week, but that is why he's not here tonight, so congratulations to him as well. So move on. Report of the Superintendent of Schools.
My news is not that exciting.
But you're better rested.
Better rested. So the first item I have is the Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment Search. So in your packet, you've got a multi-step process that includes the time, each of the steps in the process, includes a timeline for the process, and includes a broad base of involvement and participation in terms of who will be involved in the process. So first it's advertising and posting, and then a screening committee will meet. The screening committee is made up of those people that are representative of different pieces of our school system, whether it's the school committee members, parents, administrators, teachers, curriculum leaders. You can see that it culminates, then an interview process with all the candidates, finalist interviews with me, and then the goal is to produce a candidate who will be appointed to you at the February 26th meeting. I'll be able to introduce that person to you, if I'm able to do it sooner, I will. Sometimes these things slow down, but I think this is, this is a pretty good date in terms of timeframe. So it would, it will involve two parents who are school council members. I think it's important to honor those people who were elected to different school councils. Hopefully we'll get able to get an elementary and a secondary person. I'd ask you if you'd provide a school committee member who is interested in participating in this process, and then three faculty and staff members, one from special education, and then two with curriculum leadership responsibilities, two administrators, one elementary, one secondary, one central office administrator, that'll be Felicia, and then, and I am the observer for the purpose of being able to do the second round of interviews, but a couple of people in the room have sat in on these committees with me, and I'm, I'm pretty involved from the beginning, I'm very involved from the beginning. I want to answer any questions that, that people might have, and when the committee's interested in telling me who might want to serve in this committee, I'd, I'd want who would be interested.
I'm interested.
And is there anyone else interested currently?
I think Jackie would be a really good asset to have on it.
I agree.
Jackie, great. Thank you.
Do you need anything else from us on it?
Nope.
Okay, all right.
Want to make sure people were aware of the process, the timeline, and you know, you can see, I think you can see that it's a, it's a broad base of people that would be involved in it, trying to grab someone from everywhere.
Mm-hmm, no, perfect.
So the next item I have is my value, my annual evaluation summary, and I'm going to say this, forgive me for saying the following thing probably five or six times as I do this, I'm not going to read anything to you, but what I want to say is, I didn't do any of these things, it's, it's a we did these things. It's a faculty and a staff and administrative team and parents and volunteers and students who did these things. And this is representative of the progress the Avenue Public Schools has made over the last calendar year. This is on a different cycle than some of the evaluations we do, this is on a calendar year. And so I don't want, I don't pretend for a second that I did these things, is, is one of the most important things I want to communicate to people, it's, it's a we did these things. We've made incredible progress. The other thing I want to communicate to people is that even in any area here that we've made progress in, we're not done, and there are other areas that need to make substantial more progress. That work should never and will never be done in a, in a school system because the moment you go with the status quo, you're falling behind and you're selling our students short. So that's not to say, this is, so two things, it's, this is a we did this, and, and right after that, and we're not done. I won't read anything to you, but I do, I think I owe it to you to hit some highlights here, because this is an extensive document. So the way it, the way it reads, rolls out is it notes the increased expectation that we as a district continue to lift the level of professional performance at the leadership level for all schools, which the superintendent's direct control over, including central offices' statement that we talked about earlier in the evening. All, that is woven into these goals. So what you'll notice is there's a district improvement goal to continue to transition to a pre-K through 12 system with our new configuration. If you remember last year, we, a year early, moved into these buildings, I can't believe how quickly time has passed, but we're moved in, and now we need to continue to improve what we do. So you'll see anticipated activities, those were written a year ago, I wrote a mid-year reflection, you gave me comments on those, and then I addressed those comments and the goals in my end-of-year reflection. So to that end, in the first goal, if you remember, we have new start times that are different than the first year. These new start times were done to ease the, the stress in the lives of our families, and I think we accomplished that. I don't think our start times are perfect. Improved recess times and improved activities during recess occurred. I don't think we're done there, I know we're not, when we get that field back, it's going to be even better. We added a full-day kindergarten program for free for our, for our residents. That was a part of this, improving the program even though we've made these changes. So I didn't add a full-day kindergarten program, it was done by a lot of people, but it is, it is a success that I think we should be very proud of. There were estimates in funding that had to occur, there was a whole municipal process that involved many other elements of these goals that had to occur, all of those things The, the next goal was increasing the proficiency with technology. So again, there are action steps. We just implemented a one-to-one computer initiative for every student at the secondary level that includes all of the faculty and staff at the secondary level. We had 50 people come in who are our faculty members over the summer to introduce themselves to it on three different occasions on their own time. You just saw that the professional development continues with that. We say we've been doing two years of professional development in preparation for this, but let's face it, three years of professional development really means three days and then a couple of half-days. So we really need to sustain this for our teachers. But I've got the data that shows that we are effectively progressing in our use of tech, with our, with technology, also at the elementary level with, with a two-to-one ratio, so much so that Microsoft is sending one of their national executives here to tour to see what we're doing. And I don't know what that, what the result, well, that will be in the coming months, but they're coming because they've been talking to the Microsoft people about the things that we've been doing here. And if there's something we can leverage out of that that's good for us, we will. And if there isn't, there's no loss in having them tour, we're proud of the work we do. Our student learning goal, our last school committee meeting, we spent mostly the evening on that, I promise I won't dive too deeply into that, we can, we can, I can provide you more information on that if you'd like, but I can tell you that we have excellent growth in both the aggregate and our subgroups. Again, that doesn't mean that we're done, because every year, that data provides you and should be providing you new targets that you should be refocusing on and informing your work. I didn't teach one lesson in the Avenue Public Schools last year, I didn't teach one classroom full of kids. Our teachers did, and our, and our principals worked hard at this, so, but as a system, you know, I'm, I'm proud of that. Similarly, we have a Blue Ribbon designation here at the high school. One of the things that the committee talked about in its mid-year comments, and those are, there are other mid-year comments in the other goals that were addressed in what I wrote, was the social-emotional piece and programming for students. I can already anticipate in, in the coming year, a social-emotional learning goal in more of a comprehensive fashion than, than we've been working on in the Avenue Public Schools. It's not to say we haven't been addressing the social-emotional piece to the education process, but I feel as though, and James has been working on doing some assessments in a more strategic view of where and how and when we do that work. But that doesn't mean we're waiting. For example, the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center was here to do an anti-bullying presentation. We had Drug Story Theater, we're doing signs of suicide at the secondary level, SOS. The, the online safety component brought to us by the District Attorney's Office occurred, and I know, I believe it's the sports boosters are looking at maybe having Chris Herring come back?
In conjunction with another entity, yes.
So, again, I didn't do that, it was, it was the sports boosters and another entity that did that last time, I think it was Christie Coons was involved in that or who it was, but.
And just to that point, the Drug Story Theater was sponsored fully by the PTO at the middle school who funded that, fully funded that, so we're really lucky that they support us in these social-emotional endeavors, because it was, it was a pricey but worthwhile presentation.
So I, I didn't do that, that's, that's an us piece that's been done in the district. But these are professional goals, these are district-wide goals for the Avenue Public Schools, so that's, that's why they're here. Demonstrated improved district lines of communication and expectation. You know that we've been publishing FAQs. I think that the, I think that the addition of the full-day kindergarten program is a good example of the success with communication, because we wouldn't have done that without our parents supporting us. The Alice Training is another one, to be quite honest with you. We went full bore mid-year into Alice last year, and you know that we had multiple sessions, those continue, we're not done. We're diving deeper into that now, and it's communicate, communicate, communicate with our, with our parents so they know what, what we're doing with that program. It, you know, knock on wood, we were successful enough with it that even, even the Greenwave Gazette had an article published from one of our students talking about how much better and how much more empowered and comfortable she felt after, after she worked with the Alice Training here at the high school. Again, that, the next point I want to make is there's a lot more to do, and I'm available to answer people's questions, to provide more information as the committee wishes. So look forward to... So, look forward to talking with you about it further.
Okay, thank you. From what, so I'm going to be looking for, and you don't have to give it to me on this paper, any kind of, like you did for the mid-year, on the four goals, if you could answer, if you could rate unsatisfactory, need further action, proficient or exemplary, and any comments you want to write, and I'll try to condense and consolidate into them. I'm going to look for them back by the end of the year so that I can consolidate them together and get them put together for an agenda on January 8th. So if anybody has any questions, feel free to reach out to me. Obviously, any questions for Peter? Anything you want to talk about him, I think I can speak for you and say, feel free to go to you at any point.
Absolutely, yes, no worries.
I have a question now that there's, might be interested in. I just wonder, what was the thought process behind introducing another online housing of where students can find their grades and parents can go to where we're not fully using Parent Portal? Now we have some teachers using Canvas, some teachers using Portal, some still not doing either. I recently sat in another meeting with the Athletic Director Subcommittee to review the Athletic Can Book. And there were students there and there are students, and I've been saying this, I've been doing this for a long time and saying the same thing. We had students, leases on that same committee, sitting around the table saying, my teachers never put anything in it. You know, so I think it's, I just wonder what the thought process is. So now we have two options. And how are we, how are we really going to partner with parents and say we have this great system if we don't utilize either one adequately?
Or is there an end goal when everyone, is there a timeline for when the expectation is for everyone?
I've been doing this for decades.
Maybe it's coming.
I've been talking about Parent Portal.
I think change is hard, but maybe it's coming now, soon.
I appreciate the question. And it's because especially, Jeanette, you have been working on this. You were even on a committee with, with the association to talk about this years ago. So, the answer, to answer your question is, it's going to be all Canvas. The reason we're making the switch is because Canvas, Canvas is the, what they call a learning management system. It manages everything. It manages assignments, it manages, so that students are able to have their laptops and access those assignments online. It manages the grades, it manages, it's a, it's a, it's an online classroom. The grading Parent Portal piece is just accessing, it's a, it's a vehicle to access grades. So we're making that shift towards Canvas. When we will be 100%, I don't know. The goal is to have it in the next two, three years, 100%. And I'm able to track the data better through Canvas than, than we are with Parent Portal in terms of not only grading, but how many teachers have websites? How many teachers are running their classes and their assignments through Canvas? And so it's more real-time data and it's better accountability. This Canvas system is something that was just introduced to people in August.
Right.
And so, I, I do realize that, well, we introduced it prior to, but we couldn't, they couldn't really use it until August because we didn't have students from us with laptops until August. So, uh, that's the goal. And as I walk through, as I do the walkthroughs and I, I talk to some high school students about Canvas and about their assignments being online and the use of the laptops. And I think I included in here, it's in, it's not as hard, the accountability data is not as hard as the data that the Canvas provides. But as I talk to students, they did say to me, most of my teachers are already using the system. That's not enough, it's not 100%. But for something that we rolled out really four months ago, that's pretty good for our first kickoff.
I hope, I mean, just if the, if the account, if you're going to be getting better, accurate data, that there's actually some follow-up to it and the, and the accountability is that they're held. You know, we, we, I think we really want to partner with parents and it's frustrating. I find, I mean, extremely frustrating when you go, and your children, and your children too. I mean, my, my sons, both were like, oh, but, you know, they run out all the time. And we've had this conversation, your, your children too. And it is frustrating when grades, they expect, I took a test two weeks ago, it's not there. You know, I said, well, it's time. Or at the end of the thing, or right before progress reports, you know, it's frustrating. So I hope that something comes. I think it's great that due to the one-to-one initiative, it's great that we're having better, more broad-based experiences that are open to us. I just hope that's something.
I'm glad you asked that question because it's, it's an obvious question. Why in the heck would you be doing this if we can't even get that right?
That was my only question. Chris? Question.
Okay, yeah, go ahead Danielle.
I was just wondering, on those lines, is there a district, before Canvas, I know that that gets a little confusing having two platforms, but was there a district policy for every week or every two weeks, teachers must have their grades?
That was the committee that Jeanette served on to try to create that and come to agreement on what that might be. And that was early in the, this process. And we didn't come to an agreement with that in terms of the change in working edition. Is that fair?
That was fair.
This is a little unrelated, but I just had this thought in the subsequent questions about Canvas. I was just thinking for people in the audience, because this used to happen to me. All of the documents we're looking at, like these meaty documents, like the memorandum, which was 12 pages, and then as we just had a lengthy discussion about goals and comments, all of those are public. And Deirdre informed me once when I would peek over her shoulder at what she was looking at, where you could get them. But I'm wondering, could we maybe just keep like a handful of some of the, at the meetings? When you come in, there's usually the agenda is there. But I know, like, I never, even though when I knew that they were, where they were, I didn't always have the time to hit print and get them. And for things that aren't PowerPoints or aren't quickly explained on a one piece of paper, that it is helpful and easier to follow along in the conversation if you're looking at what we're talking about. I don't know how anyone else feels about that, just not a lot. I know, I don't want to, I want to be mindful of the trees, but like just even a handful of...
Yeah, it doesn't have to be everything either, but the hot, the hot topics.
Like tonight, I thought like the memorandums lengthy, maybe even it just, when I say handful, like less than 10 copies that someone might want to peek at. And then the goals, and even if we share, you know, I just, some won't take them. But I remember wishing at times that I could, I could have either hit print or that there were some options available for me to peek at.
So, what I'll do if, and I want to check this, is I won't do it, the real superintendent's school's... I'll ask her to help me with it, is we'll bring a half dozen. And I'll call it a half dozen, can I call it a half dozen? And I don't want to, I don't want to decide what is, which, which is what, which is and isn't. It'll just be a half dozen copies of what people get. Only out of respect, like you said Jackie, for trees and, and also for the 10 pallets of paper that we go through every year.
And I think if it's a PowerPoint, there's no, I'd be careful to copy this whole packet because you were able to look along with the PowerPoint and see all of the things Sherry talked about. I don't know, maybe we can have another conversation about this. I just, I think when we talk about things that are...
No, I know what you mean.
Lengthy and that are hard to follow along.
Yeah, no, I understand.
That it might be helpful to have something to look at.
Yeah, so everybody knows though, here and watching, you can get the entire package on the Public Schools website. There's links for it if you want to look at it before or after. That is available too for anybody, anybody not here.
Deirdre Zaccardi will show you the way, check in with her and she will get...
I'll put that on my phone too on time.
That's a good idea, yeah.
I said eight pages when I looked at it yesterday.
Yeah, it's, yeah, something for us to think about. But I was watching some faces as it, it is hard to hold on to all of what we're talking about when you're not looking at some of the same things that you're referencing. And we are, so it just was a thought that I had.
And, and you know, for example, when I, when I give you a 12-page reflection, you know, I don't want to read the whole thing to you. Because that would be awful. So I try to hit the highlight.
We appreciate that.
Thanks. Moving on, report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business Finance, Felicia.
Two items for you tonight. The first one is the delineation between salary and expense account. So I'd be looking for motion that to improve the allocation. The salary account for FY 19 is $17,287,606. And the expense account is $5,727,986. For a total of $23,015,592.
Just breaking out what our total expense approval was, okay.
Do you want to maybe just explain to people why does they get this at this part of the calendar?
Sure, so we, well, one, we're still in negotiations with one of, one of the units. And it's at, so that's, that is factored into the salary side. And throughout the fall, throughout the late summer, we're doing hiring. We're solidifying out-of-district placements. We're coming to a point on our staffing really is the big thing. And so, in mid-October, we're pretty confident of where we are for salary and expense. And so that's, that's when it's broken out, is mid-October-ish, we have our final number. I mean, I always like, I knew going into the school year that it was about 17 and a half million was going to be salaries, but this is pinpointed down to what it was on November 1st. And, you know, depending what happens through the year, they may be looking for a vote in June to do a transfer from salary to expense or expense to salary. And this is something that, you know, is tracked all year and there's, you have any questions?
Okay.
How do these numbers compare to FY 18?
The percentages are about the same. The percentages are pretty consistent year after year.
Just curious.
So you need, do you need a motion for it?
I'm looking for a motion to line up the salary and expense accounts as presented by Felicia.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. School Building Committee update. We are, we're winding down on this, we actually are not having a meeting this month, the School Building Committee. The punch list is very small at this point. We have a few outstanding items that we will be watching and that we've talked about. The bathroom in the middle school office and nurse's office. They've changed out the flushometers on those. And so we're watching that. We have some additional flooring, tile flooring in the kitchen that they're going to be doing some replacement warranty work on over winter break. But the systems that we had concerns about at the last meeting, heating, boilers, those have, knock on wood, since they made those fixes to those have been, have been working very well. And we haven't had any other hot water issues since we did the rebalancing of the system. One of the last construction pieces is the fence guard rail that's out in front of the lawn or field that's out front. And the weather has impacted some of that installation. But I actually didn't see it driving in because it was dark, but I know they're making, they're making progress on it. They should be, they, they had anticipated being done by Friday, but it, everything's taken a little bit longer because of the weather.
The rain, the constant rain.
The wind, yeah. And our, yeah, and our, our solar field is producing electricity, our reclaimed water system, we had some...
That must be great.
Yeah, really, well, the cistern is actually full, but it's, it's, you know, we, we had some challenges with that system and had to do, they had to do some re-engineering around that. And we've had to make some changes to how the water gets purified coming out of the reclaimed water system. But knock on wood, that's, that's also working, working well. The blue flush in the toilets is reclaimed one.
Excellent. Thank you, Felicia. New business establishing the next school committee meeting dates. There are none in December. We'll have two in January. The first one is Tuesday, January 8th at 7:00 PM, which is our regular monthly meeting, which will include a preliminary fiscal year 2020 budget hearing that begins at 7:30. And then we'll also have a regular monthly meeting two weeks later on Tuesday, January 22nd at 7:00 PM. Both, all those meetings will be held here in the library. Just some informational items, well, Peter and I'll speak to...
It's a quick question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Is the budget hearing meeting in the middle of the meeting? Is it, that's just when, your proximity, it starts at 7:30?
Definitely starts at 7:30, used to open at 2:00.
Kind of like our school choice thing was to start the last meeting, it's kind of like a separate type thing.
Right, right, okay.
Right. I think I had, I think I had the same question last year, now I know. Really quick, and the informational items in the packet that none of you have, if you look online, though, you can see it. There's, yeah, the National Honor Society Ceremony took place. The date was November 14th here at the auditorium. We welcomed, I don't have the number in front of me. At least a few dozen new members to the National Honor Society. I want to congratulate all of them. Just in particular, I want to mention Cameron Kearney, who's our student representative, who's not here tonight, but he is a new member of the National Society, as well as Colby Augusta, who is the son of Lisa Augusta, a member on the school committee. So congratulations to them, as well as everybody else that was inducted that night. Do you want to take the next couple?
Sure. You also have in your packet correspondence regarding the MIA District C Sportsmanship Award. So, you know, I put this in here, you may or may not be aware, aware that we won this award, but I wrote this letter to both Terry and Peter. Because I'm, you know, I'm really proud of the fact that we have the service projects that we have, that we include the students on the Unified Sports, the way that we include them. A lot of districts don't have a unified sports team. And once you've seen a unified sports competition, you just ask yourself, why haven't we been doing this all along? The multi-age involvement with our youth sports groups, with our athletes, I think, is key for both those younger kiddos in town and for, and to expect our students to be role models to them. So, those are the things that were done. It's, it has nothing to do with wins and losses. It's, it's the, it's the things that are actually more important than wins and losses in terms of what we do for our students, and that's why I wanted to highlight that to you. Similarly, I, I wanted to congratulate Alyssa McSherry, our cheerleading coach. Our cheerleaders went to, they were the Division Four South Sectional Champions, as well as winning second in the Division and State Finals. And then you also have correspondence here to the Beaverbrook leadership that provided the Booster-Thon. And they raised, I believe it was about $32,000. And so, this is a letter to Pam Neely that, that thanks her for her involvement. But a similar letter went to Kate Minahan, Amy Messia. And one went to the Avenue Police Department and the Chief of Police. Because they involve themselves in donations and working with us on that. And similarly, there's no thank you note here to anyone in the Avenue Education Foundation, but Danielle is here, they had, they had the first annual cornhole tournament. And I call it the first annual cornhole tournament because I feel like there are going to be more cornhole tournaments and raised $1,500 for the AEF. Also, in here is a letter to Rebecca Polkanen and her involvement with the Booster-Thon and so on. I just don't want to leave anybody out. You've got, also got our recipients of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship in your packet. Jeanette, you were asking questions about the continuance of that. So this affirms that and these are the students represented here. And that's it. Oh, not on the informational sheet and not online yet. This is breaking news. I want to tell everybody this while it's on cable and at this point, we're going to be doing radon testing through the Department of Public Health in all of our buildings. It is not because we're worried, it's not because something happened. We're not even required to do it. It's because we have an opportunity to do it. And, you know, I sent, I, I end a lot of letters with the safety of our students and staff is our, is our first priority. It's because we actually mean that, that we're doing that testing. So I wanted to say that here tonight. You're going to be hearing more information about that. We're going to, we're going to tell people about it because people are going to get little canisters around the buildings. And I don't want people thinking that something happened or that we have a scare of any kind. There's no scare of any kind. You'll be getting that correspondence in the coming weeks. We're doing it because we have an opportunity to do it.
Being paid for by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health.
And, and it's, and it's the right thing to do to make sure we have a safe, safest environment possible, so. I also can report to you that the Avenue Police Department has been out and working on our school bus safety. Sorry about just... Sorry about, just one more quick add-on.
Okay.
And our, the vehicle traffic around town. And I was told today that they've stopped a number of people for not adhering to stopping appropriately when a school bus has the activation arm out, and, or, or trying to go around a bus with its activation arm out until that, until that activation arm goes back in, so. And that's more informational than I was supposed to do.
Just going to, we have a bunch of dates to remember, just going to hit on them really quick. Friday, this coming Friday, November 30th, the Abington High School Junior Class Auction takes place here at the cafeteria at 7:00 PM. On Tuesday, December 4th, there are two things here in the building. The Abington Music Parents Meeting in the cafeteria at 6:00, and the CPAC Meeting takes place here in the library at 6:30. Wednesday, December 5th, Green Wave Boosters Meeting here in the library at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, December 11th is an in-service early release day. Wednesday, December 12th, the AEF Meeting takes place at Town Hall at 7:00 PM. On Thursday, December 13th, the High School Holiday Concert in the auditorium at 7:00 PM. The next night, Friday, December 14th, Abington Community Band and Chorus Holiday Concert in the auditorium, also at 7:00 PM. The following week, more music. Wednesday, December 19th, Grades 5 and 6 Holiday Concert in the auditorium at 7:00. The next night, Thursday, December 20th, Grade 7 and 8 Concert in the auditorium at 7:00. Holiday Vacation Break is from Christmas Eve, Monday, December 24th, through New Year's Day, which is Tuesday, January 1st. Saturday, January 5th, the Abington Education Foundation will host Team Trivia Night at the Abington Knights of Columbus on Hancock Street. And finally, our next meeting, as we mentioned earlier, will take place Tuesday, January 8th, right here in the library, with the preliminary budget hearing at 7:30 as well. Happy holidays. This is our last one until January, so happy holidays to everybody. And with that, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I need to adjourn.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't have vacation, that's the only thing. Do I do the next day? I can do the next day, the 27th.
Just say no. I can't talk about money the day after.
Time to put all that together based on input. So, any, any plan that lasts?
I honestly...
You have an answer?
Yeah.